Hello and welcome to another episode of the On Trade Network Sessions. So two guests with me tonight, so we've got lots to talk about. So I've got Lloyd and Timos from Legacy Brands. Welcome both.
Evening.
So the guys are here to talk to us about the on-trade and we're going to have a drink as well. They've been kind enough to send me quite a lot of booze.
I was gonna say a drink.
Yeah, so one or two drinks and they're going to talk us through those drinks as well. So before we start then, what should I be drinking right now?
So we start with a refreshing rum and tonic. So the, from the Mob 33, the first refreshing that we released is the Gold Heist Rum. And the idea behind this rum is a blend of rums up to five years old. So it's predominantly Spanish style. The origins is Dominican Republic, Venezuela, Barbados and Jamaica. And the way I see, like normally people asking, why would you do a blend? When you can go and source the best that you can afford in bucket of the best of the best of five years old or the seven years old age. In my head, always it works like, almost like a piece of music. So when you've got just piano, it's lovely, but after an hour, it's still like a bit boring. But when you add together violins, guitars, drums and everything, then essentially you create like a symphony. So I think with rum and the blends in general is exactly the same thing. When you bring like five years old rum, the three years old rum, a bit of different origins, a bit of young rum, then you create something very unique with a character and a personality rather than having just one age in the bottle. So if you like to nose it a bit, the idea as well, it was for us to create around below thirty quid, the bracket of below thirty pounds with no additives, no sugar, no colouring, GMO free, vegan friendly. So on this category, if you want to, there's only a few that take in the box below thirty pounds. So we just wanted to introduce a round of this honest, the honest form that could come from the sugarcane to the bottle and to introduce more people to the actual real rum. So as I said, this one is predominantly Spanish style, so you should expect a bit lighter on body, very fruity, with a character of Barbados and the personality of Jamaica. So on the nose, normally you should get some honey, I did honey, banana, it was a bit more tropical, mango as well. And we give it a shape. The first thing to pick up is pears. I know it's a bit strange as a first like thing to pick up from the rum, but always like I get pears, red apples, again a little bit of honey. What do you get Ross? That's the question.
You're asking a Belgian beer drinker. No, I definitely got honey when you said about it on the nose and in terms of taste. I mean, you know, and what I like, I normally kill strong spirits with a Coke or a, or a, you know. Yeah, no, I do, I do, because it, for me, sometimes it's a little bit too hot. But actually, I could drink this quite comfortably without anything in it.
You'll see through the spirits that we show, you'll see a trend coming through. It's about the taste. So when we look for a product to either make ourselves or represent, the commercial proposition is not the first piece. It's all about the liquid, the taste, the appeal to the consumer. So we've been in rum before, we've succeeded. And with this, just like you're saying, you're a beer drinker, not really a spirit drinker. And you almost dilute it with a mixer where something like this delivers on the actual taste that, you know, a rum producer would want you to taste without mixing it. And it's smooth and what you're not getting is that high ethanol hit on the back of the throat and that traditional burn. So you've got the smoothness and this is where certain rum brands now are opening the market to the wide audience. Because people have just assumed spirits with that harshness. And now it's about enjoying it with the quality. Yes, you can complement it with Coke and we'll come on the tonic that brings it out more. But yeah, it's about enjoying and exploring those. And when we come onto another product called Broken Clock Vodka. Vodka, you know, has that reputation for that hit as well on the back of the throat. When you try that, you won't get that at all. Cool. And interestingly enough, the Mob 33, we're having some fun with the brand, all about prohibition and lockdowns. And the brand was conceived, funny enough, through a lockdown. So part of that came together from a team across the industry that were all made redundant. Through our contacts, we've either worked against each other in other brands or we've worked together at brands. So we came together as a team of ten of us last, last summer for Legacy Brands. And now part of that is Mob 33, which is a brand that we own and develop. So we've got some of the cheeky chappiness coming through it as well. And if you look down the side of the bottle, it will tell you that a justice has just been served when it's full. If it's half full, you're on the run. And if you're at the bottom, your time's up unfortunately. So it's having some fun with the brand as well and almost taking some of the stuffiness out of the, probably the pure premium, which is there, but bringing a bit of lightheartedness to it. And so that taste profile probably brings newer drinkers to the category.
Yeah.
And having that brand recall and stand out on shelf as well.
Yeah, the bottle does look fantastic and I like the prohibition, particularly as we're back in the roaring twenties.
Yep.
You know, we've had, we've had the lockdowns and we've, we've been stopped from going to pubs. Shall I pop a bit of tonic in it to try?
Yeah.
Yep, please do. And the idea is with, with the tonic, with some, I'm a huge fan, is that you can make like a really refreshing drink, almost like a session drink if you want to, because the tonic allows to the rum to bring all the flavours up and identify all these different flavours and aromas. Where normally with the traditional dark mixers such as Coke or ginger ale, they tend like overpowering or musting your actual liquid. And personally, I find it like really sweet, especially with Coke on the second, third drink. Well, with the tonic is literally such a summery drink. And also it can be like, if you want to, in order like to be G and T drinkers. So you've got essentially something with more flavours, more character. Still, you can serve it in a balloon with tonic and enjoy it as you would a normal like gin and tonic.
Right, so tell us, tell us a bit about Legacy Brands through lockdown. Tell us, tell us.
So Legacy Brands through lockdown, well, probably the burning question is we, we came together in the summer. We launched in September last year and we essentially launched an on-trade business. So what bunch would launch an on-trade business after coming out of one lockdown and going into another?
Madness.
Yeah, so yeah, complete madness. But we had a great set of investors behind us. We all know each other within industry and the brands that we represent, we actually haven't gone after. Those brands have come to us. So you know, elements like Bottega from Italy, the Prosecco Heist with their spirits, Adamas, Emma Lee's beers that we've got and Broken Clock Vodka, all from people that we knew that have said, you know, why don't you go solo and do it yourself? So as a team, we've got people that are ex Picardy directors, ex catalyst, which is our Matthew Clark directors. One of our other directors is a buyer for Harding, used to be a buyer for Hardin's Retail, duty free. So we cover a broad spectrum. I'm heavily in the on-trade with Timos. We've got people that specialise in the off-trade cash and carry. But after launching and then suddenly the next lockdown comes into place, we had to rewrite the business plan. And at the moment, we've built a huge business in cash and carry, online, gifting, gift packs, independent retail shops and slightly but surely now the on-trade is coming back with those wholesalers. And there's been one or two menu tweaks that we've been able to do with some of the operators. But a lot of those now are pushed back until, what, September this year, October. But probably the bulk of it is now going to be Easter next year.
Yeah.
Because it's a case of if it's not broke, we need to trade.
Yeah.
So we've got that for us is a bonus because we're trading in a business that we probably wouldn't have had for another two or three years. So with the on-trade, probably this time next year, when we've reopened everything with the on-trade, the business we've got now is a bonus and a bolt-on, which is great. But it has been a steep learning curve, sector errors that we, we haven't been in before or we've not operated in for a long time. But it's great learning new things. We probably won't cover Brexit because we source from all over the world and that's caused us great pain. But yeah, it's been great talking to people over the last X amount of months. Finally, the last couple of weeks, getting to see people. But it is amazing how much you can achieve over Zoom in teams. And it questions partly the ethos of how you do business going forward.
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of, a lot of businesses that will change the way that they, their teams work. And, you know, I was guilty of, you know, sometimes travelling 300 miles round trip for a, for a 20 minute meeting, the buyer.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm sure some of that will happen, you know, for, for, for certain meetings. But I think you can have more frequent catch-ups so that you, you can, you can be more on the pulse with buyers than having to think, well, you know, I've got to fit in a day out of my diary to go for a 20 minute meeting. So, so there's that, there's teams who, you know, the head offices is based in one place. And, you know, you know, in my business, you know, we've got our head office in Gloucester there and we've got people in Edinburgh. We've got people down in Bristol, I'm in Wales and, you know, so this will be part of the future. You know, you won't have a monthly team meeting in the office. You'll have maybe a quarterly or six monthly get together, the rest will be done this way, which is great. And I think cultures have developed that have been widely happening around the world for a lot longer than the UK's habit where people, people weren't perhaps trusted to work from home. Employers wouldn't have that trust. They've had no choice in this circumstance, so they've had to roll with it. And actually, in a certain number of places, you know, that agile working, you've got happier employees because the work-life balance is better. They haven't got the absolute nightmare of an hour to two hour commute to some people would have. They're home with their kids immediately after work. They're able to pop the washing out on a sunny day. You know, and what you find is those people, you retain people better because their work-life balance is.
Yes.
But they're often more productive because they'll, they can work around things. So they might think, well, I need to finish 10 minutes early, but I'll get up early and, and, and a bit more. And I remember reading a study a few years ago, and I won't go on too much and bore you with it, but about businesses who gave their staff a four-day week, the productivity was significantly higher than when they were five-day-week businesses because people had less time chatting, less time procrastinating, they knew what they had to do. They had a four-day week to do it and they cracked on and did it. And it's that balance and giving ownership to teams that this will have absolutely done. So that you've got, but before we carry on, actually, with the tonic in it, the pear really came out. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that the flavour of the pear as we were drinking, as we.
You can, you can say these mixologists just don't come up with all these names and flavours. Because sometimes you're there going, I don't know what they're on about.
Sometimes I just think it's crap, but you know what you're talking about. And no, while, while we were talking and I took a drink, I thought, oh, I really can smell and taste the pear now. So that made a huge difference.
More importantly, his glass is empty.
Go on then, tell me what, what I'm doing next.
So I think, I think it's broken clock time now.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
All that, all that planning, I haven't got the bottle.
Oh dear.
Yes, I have, it's behind me. I saw, I saw this on, somebody advertising this on LinkedIn, I really like the front label.
I'm trying to see.
With a. Broken Clock is Big Ben, is what it's based on.
Okay.
And things like the metal clasp for it, clang in when it comes down, bring stuff back to all the times. And the Kenzie, it's made in Cheshire with English apples. And I'll leave Timos to do the rest because I probably won't do it as good a service as Timos does.
So the idea with Broken Clock is that everything is taking, taking time. So it's time like to almost, what with the pandemic happened, if you want to, you just like stop the time. You just a bit enjoy everything, you appreciate because nothing, you shouldn't take everything for granted. So the whole like ethos and the idea behind the Broken Clock is, that's why they call it like as a lingering vodka as well, is taking time to be distilled, it's taking time to grow like the apples, which is a win for apples from Cheshire and the using in. It's not in a flavoured vodka, it's a vodka with character as they would like to introduce it. And if you, if you try a bit neat, you'll see that it's like very velvety, very smooth, really, really soft flavours of alcohol, even like it's 40%, but it doesn't burn the back of your throat if you want to, which is a. And also they get like, you know, green apples, vanilla coming up front. And it's, it's good to sip it on its own, to be fair with you.
Best, especially if you put the bottle in the freezer, the apples already come out.
We've done a tasting with all the guys and Alex from Broken Clock asked me, what's how we do for the whole team? To get the whole idea, so we say we're going to try it neat with a mixer. And then I was trying to come up with a, with a cocktail that is easy to replicate everywhere at home and it don't need really, you know, weird infusions or something. So it's like, I've got an idea, we can do like the best ever thing. We can do a Duke style martini from London. And Alex was like, what do you mean? It's like, we're going to ask all of them to stick the bottle in the freezer. We're going to rinse the martini glass with just a little bit of vermouth. We're going to like wash it on the, on the floor and then we're just going to add the vodka from the freezer straight into the glass. And that I went down like a treat. After like half, half a glass of it, everybody was like more than happy.
So you can see on a Friday afternoon, we have what we call Teams Bar. So we're all online, but we get to try probably new products that are coming our way or new brands that want to show it. So it's quite a hardship, you know, on a Friday afternoon, trying all these new things. It's tough, yeah, I know it's tough. It's tough logistically trying to get it around the country. But yeah, it's definitely tough just sitting here going, well, I think I might have to have another try. Do we try it this way? Do we try it that way? But yeah, it's great having the interaction, the fun and building where the brands go.
Also, I think is, as Ross said as well, you know, this whole situation of putting us working from home and everything at the beginning as well, when we set up, I thought it was a bit silly as an idea if you want to. It's like, do we have like to gather every Friday? However, though, is, I think it's so needed because obviously we cannot gather all together on a table. Still that via teams, I think like adds like so much to build the whole strength of the team, which I found, I find it great, is, is the best thing that we, we came up with as an idea.
Definitely. But then I think there, there is some longer term impact on the trade. Because people realise it's almost like the old big night in. The big night in has come back majorly.
Yeah.
Probably the last two weeks has disappeared because well, we can get back out into trade. But I think once we're back out, everyone's back out, people then start realising if you have a good summer, what you can do at home and how you can connect with people. So I think whilst we have a plus, I think there's also a big negative against us. But then that's probably as a sector, what we're good at is creating those experiential events. And it's about having something in venue that you can do at home. And that's absolutely got to be priority and, and you know.
On-trade and talking because obviously my background is always operating bars, owning bars, running bars. I was 16 years about under. I don't think so that you will ever be able to replicate the hospitality element at home. I get it because I, I cannot replicate it even if, you know, for, for a few friends and now we can have in the, in the backyard, in the backyard, it is not the same, it's the whole experience that the bar, a pub, a restaurant creates for you. So yes, obviously we had liked to adopt during the pandemic. But, and that's a great thing that we cannot replicate, the hospitality is a hospitality in, in a house, inside the house. And that's why we need hospitality and bars and pubs and restaurants.
Yeah. I think we need to step hospitality industry, like Lloyd, you said, you know, it's, it's creating things in, in venue that can't be replicated at home.
Yeah, and I think the, you, you take another jump over in the industry and you look at events that have been hit hard and festivals. We're working with quite a few event partners, we've already got some stuff live already in London with some of our ranges. And the ticket demand now, they're seeing a more bigger surge than they've ever seen before. So it's one of those, it's, you can go out and have fun and see something different. But then you've also got that pool that you can do something at home. However, what you can't really replicate is the festival experience. And that's, that's where you're on about, about the on-trade, about having that experiential piece that you can have at home. But yeah, some festivals I know we're working with and we will be going in September. They previously in 2009 sold 10,000 tickets. They've already sold 18,000 tickets so far. And they've got a huge waitlist. And then on some of the outdoor bars that we're working with in London, where we're one of the major suppliers, they are, they were predicting 50, 60k a week take, they're doing over 100 at the moment. And that's just the first two weeks. And last week, yeah, the weather wasn't brilliant. And that's saying they're probably about nine or 10% down on where they were the previous week. But overall, they're seeing another operators, they're seeing plus 20% versus Christmas. So it's on top of the Christmas sales this time of year.
Yeah.
Which has created that capacity on availability of products.
Yeah.
But yeah, we're, I think we're seeing the swings everywhere. But I do think whilst the experiential piece was key always, I think is even more key now because it's the reason why you should come to my bar, my venue. What can you offer me that I can do at home because there's that comparison.
Yeah, I think in the, in the short to medium term, people are going to go back to the pub like, like they haven't done for a very long time. We're going to see a real boost for the industry.
Yeah.
We as an industry then have got to figure out how to keep them coming. I'll tell you what, I'll make, I'll make a commitment for Cardiff.
Yeah.
Do my very best to help the industry as much as I can in the summer. And if you do the same where you live.
I think we're going to have to send your photos to Pub Watch in Cardiff.
I'll do my best, I've been out quite a bit in the, in the, the time that we've been open in, in Wales. We've only had a week open and I've tried to get out around, around a few places.
Good.
Just to show some support. But so with this, with this Broken Clock Vodka, would you have it neat normally? Would you, would you recommend with it if I was to want something with it?
I would pair it with some ginger ale, if you've got any available. That works really, really nice.
Done.
Was that tamed up?
Well prepared.
It's like I spoke to you guys beforehand.
Yeah.
So again, you can go with a traditional vodka soda, vodka and tonic. But I think like with the ginger ale is another art as well. Also, what is very exciting, I know, is, is a new addition to our portfolio and, but it's very different as a mixer. It's a pink grape soda.
Okay.
So this one again, it makes like a really, really nice drink as a vodka and pink grape soda. Also like, you know, everybody loves a nice, a nice drink that looks pink on a balloon glass swirling around.
salute you Timos.
So, so yeah.
Nothing wrong with it.
And I've noticed I've got a, I've got a gin here as well to try, is that?
Is that gin bacca?
Yeah, should be the gin bacca.
Yeah.
So that is, is from the family of Bottega.
Right.
That's really.
It doesn't come through on the screen, but it's a plated, plated bottle.
Yeah, so it was a bronze plated bottle.
So Bottega also do obviously Bottega gold prosecco and rose gold.
Yeah.
And all those bottles are metal plated. And also they do, we should probably lead it in. They also do a very colourful range of proseccos as well called Rainbow Academia. We've, as we've got your time tonight.
Oh wow.
We've donated, we've donated a bottle to Mrs Gurney to have after.
That's, that's a record.
Yeah.
Yep, that's for, that's for Mrs Gurney, yeah, that will be.
Good, good, good. But, you know, all jokes aside, the, the rainbow range, so we do that in purple, green, orange, red, blue and yellow, I've got them all there. Then we do a black and a white, but since we launched that brand in September, it's gone phenomenal. Both online, retail, because of the different colours, it's something different. It's not green glass or clear gas glass for prosecco bottles normally. There's been a lot of intrigue for it. As well as now, we're just waiting literally for the Lloyd to turn up, we've got the 20 CLs available. And what we have seen is the 20 CL prosecco bottles absolutely take off. And I think that's a result of lockdown. So I think we're starting to realise what we have been drinking. And it's that age-old adage, if you open a bottle of prosecco, you're not going to put it back in the fridge, it's going to be finished.
Yeah.
So what we are finding is 20 CL is more of a portion control. You do pay a price premium for it, but it's people now being more conscious about their alcohol intake. But for us also, summer, great 20 CL for picnics, holidays, beaches. Something that you can put in the cool box and have a single serve without wasting a full bottle.
Yeah, I think that's very, that was very interesting to see the 20 CL, which I'm a great believer, especially for establishing establishments. They don't really sell that much of prosecco. I see the 20 CL like as a really good option because obviously you don't have to argue with each customer that your prosecco is flat because it's not. You can handle it straight away. There's less conduct if you want to for, from COVID purposes.
Yeah.
Because they can crack it on their own or they can carry out like on their own. And as I say, like he's, the always is fresh, so it's guaranteed, there's no flood, it's full of carbonation. And also for you, you don't have to commit that you're going to crack a whole bottle, stay behind your bar and you might find yourself like you maybe not sell it for the whole shift and go flat. So in a way, you minimise wasted significantly with the 20 CL.
So for us, what we have seen literally last couple of weeks is smaller single serves, huge inquiries, but also very premium serves and very expensive bottles as well, it's gone the other way. So, you know, we wholesale single bottles of prosecco at 20 to 25 pound a bottle. So and we have one bottle called Stella that lights up and puts a constellation up on the sky, the way it's all on the ceiling, sorry. The way the bottle's wrapped. At the moment, we can't ring enough that into the country. But it's that premium bit. And then what we are now getting is ready for when the late night industry opens up, is having that wow serve at the table.
Yeah.
When you bring that to the table and it lights up on your table, it's about having that almost an experiential piece that's there. And it's a point of difference than someone sticking sparklers in a bottle or having the magnum. So a lot of, I think a benefit out of lockdowns across the world is a lot of creativity has gone on.
And to go back to your question about the gin.
Yeah, yeah.
Lloyd has been drinking, drink it.
You've been per drink it, okay.
So it's from the Bottega family, but they basically, they were making a, they started as a winery making a gruppa and then proseccos, they get into the distillation as well. So that is really, is really nice, dry gin, really honest with only three botanicals. So you've got obviously juniper, sage and lemon peels, something that they wanted to capture the Italian essence into a bottle. It's very dry, very similar to London dry style gin, easygoing. We are recommending with the three cents that is part of our portfolio, a gin. We are recommending with the three cents, that is part of our portfolio, a gin tonic or any other like med tonic would work because obviously an agon is with buzzle. So it brings you a little bit closer, if you want, to the med, to the summer, to the sunshine, which, you know, in this country, there is a lack, I'll have to say as a Greek. So at least I via through my drinks, I can get some sunshine.
Definitely. You've got to get it somewhere, looking at the, the weather here now. I've been, I've been recording all of these in my conservatory.
Yeah.
And tonight there was no way that was happening because it was hailing. So I've actually kicked the family out of the living room for that, because I needed a big enough space to put the drinks.
And are they all in the conservatory, are they? Are we now going to get a pan of a camera of a poor family shivering in the conservatory? So let us in, let us in.
No wives or children were harmed in the making.
Yeah, it's really interesting because obviously we've got constantly here in China, on the last week, 10 degrees. Where on the other like extreme back home in Athens is 33. So I'm like,
Yeah.
What's going on?
I'd rather, I'd rather be in Athens, yeah.
Yeah. But then we just need the weather like we had through lockdown. I think that was, that was a save.
Oh yeah, that was a blaze, yeah.
Yeah, lockdown one was certainly had amazing weather, didn't we? So
Definitely.
Well, that's, that's, this is very nice.
Well, without doing the sales bit, but watch out for this, this one, because it's quite a few festivals throughout this year.
Okay. I, I, I'm a big fan of G, uh, G and T.
Yeah.
If I've, if I've been out for the day and I've had a few beers, which sometimes happens, then I'll
Name a day that it doesn't happen. That doesn't end in a Y.
I was going to say, I only drink on days that end in a Y, but no, if I, if I've been out, I'll quite often have a gin and tonic just as something a bit more light and refreshing and, you know, nice.
Nice.
Once, once I've got more samples of the pink grape soda, definitely I'll send you some to try with the gin because it really makes a, a completely different drink from the classic G and T.
Brilliant. So what's, what's the next few months like for Legacy? You, you did bourbon.
Yeah, for us, so bourbon and others to come, shall we say. For us, probably now is more, not consolidation, but concentrating on our, our agency business going forward. We've built a business rapidly. Complimentary Brands, excuse and Partners that we all work together. And now it's by working with those going through, we've got quite a few major off-trade retailers for the last quarter to, to work with and do some launch plans with. And we've also got quite a few on-trade, major operators, High Street, ready to launch a couple of our brands. So it's about bedding those down, making sure we've got it. But also making sure we've got supply because 95% of what we do is imported. The other bit to our business is we represent our own brand, plus a couple of others on a worldwide platform. So we've got two of the brands launched in Europe with one of the major retailers there. And then we're doing some work in America and Canada. And we've got some potential, some products there we might bring to the UK. So yeah, as a team of 10, we are flat out and busy.
Good.
Yeah, definitely. And probably more will come, you know, it never two days at the same. It's tweaking things, refining things. We've put a whole back of house, wouldn't say SAP, but a similar business system in that does everything for us. So we've had to work that and understand it. To a point all become techies to understand what we're doing. Because we don't have the big support that I'm used to be used to, excuse me to say the least. But it's great, the stuff that you learn and the upskilling is there. But also it is quite scary because someone will say, well, what's this? And you'll go, I don't know. But then that's using your network, you know, the amount of probably people I've spoken to now that you probably should have spoken to more recently and you haven't. You are, and you're open and honest, you're going, I'm actually failing you one because I haven't, but two, I need your advice on this.
Yeah.
But everyone's helpful in that. And, you know, within reason, no questions barred. So yeah, it's just refining, tweaking and developing the business further. And Timos will probably be wanting to get back to his jaunts. I expect he'll be down at Cannes at the Duty Free Show. And then no doubt you'll be at Tales of Cocktails either this year or next year over in the States. So we will get back to some travel. And probably we've got the Bird in Bar show as well today. So there's, there's different things, different places.
At the Athens also, you forgot about.
Oh yeah, you'll do Athens. But that's your holiday. I've already factored that one in.
I'm trying to pile up as many as I can on record now.
And then we will be taking a number, a number of brands to invite.
Brilliant.
So we will feature there as the brand itself, but also a separate stand as Legacy. So we'll be there in many different guises.
Excellent.
So lots for us to do and go after.
Yeah, no, well, well done. Like I say, I'm a big fan of any, any business that, you know, from the ground up, you, you've built it and you're working damned hard to, to make it work. So and, and, you know, of all the times to, to try and get, get the on-trade up and running, the fact that you're both still smiling and still passionate, hats off to you. So well done.
Yeah, the spirits do help.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, it could be worse, couldn't it? So but, but I really appreciate your time and thanks for coming on and talking about it. And when you've got new products that you want to talk about, you're always welcome.
Definitely.
And you're almost, you're always welcome to send me a bottle. Anyway, even if you don't want to talk about it.
I think we need to do probably a couple of competitions on the network, don't we?
Yeah, maybe, maybe we'll see, we'll see. But no, thank you guys. Cheers.
Thank you.
Perfect. Good to see you again, mate.